Good evening. The Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District Board Trustees is now convening in the board work session on Thursday, October 3rd at 6:00 PM in the boardroom of the Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District Mark Henry Administration Building for the purpose of reviewing that portion of the Monday, October 7th, 2024 Regular Board Meeting Agenda designed as action items to adhere designated reports recognized posted in the meeting as required by Texas law. I'd like to offer a warm welcome to our audience and those viewing online. We are here to set goals, listen to reports, per budgets, contracts, personal appointments, and make policy for the district. It's not the role of the board to make data operations decisions. The management of the data operations district is the role and responsibility of the superintendent. We have policies and procedures in place to resolve concerns and issues. This would mean the board trustees being held in the public. This is not a meeting of the public, and the audience members may not participate in the meeting outside of designated agenda item for situation or agenda comment. This means conducting orally in efficient manner accordance with local and Texas law. To achieve that goal, participants are asked, and those in the audience expect to abide by the rules outlined in board policies. Disruption by any person, including the audience, is inappropriate and will be addressed by the board president or the board council as a meeting departmentarian. Continued repeat disruptions of any meeting by words or actions is unacceptable. Individuals who have boisterous or disruptive behavior or fail to abide by the rules may be asked to leave in the galley and observe the meeting from the overflow area. Prior to meeting, board members received information related to items. Agenda items will not necessarily be handled in the order listed in the notice. During the meeting, the board may determine the close sessions necessary. In that event, the board will go into closed session and consider matters duly posted for the meeting as permitted by Sections 551.071 through 551.084 of the Texas Government Code. These proceedings are airing live on the district website. They also will be available on the district website following tonight's meeting. For the video to accurately represent the proceedings, I respectfully ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking and that your cell phones are turned off or in silent mode. Thank you for taking the time to join us this evening for interest in Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District. The invocation, Pledge of Allegiance, Vision and Mission Statement, remarks, announcements, recognitions, board comments, and situations will be presented at the regular board meeting on Monday, October 7th, 2024. We will now proceed with the reports, portion of the agenda. 5A, the administration provided a report on the efficiency audit performed by Weaver and Tidwell.
Thank you, President Henry. After the budget cuts, the district felt it would be beneficial to have an efficiency audit to identify areas we might need to evaluate further. You may recall that the Board of Trustees approved the engagement of Weaver and Tidwell at the June board meeting. The Texas Education Code defines what an efficiency audit is, and it's an investigation of operations of a school district to examine fiscal management, efficiency, and utilization of resources, including determining if the district has implemented best practices utilized by Texas school districts. The Legislative Budget Board establishes guidelines for a school district efficiency audit. So now we'll turn it over to Greg Peterson, who is partner, audit partner with Weaver and Tidwell.
There we go. Alive now? Okay. Thank you, Karen. As she mentioned, my name is Greg Peterson, so I'm the audit partner on this engagement. It's my pleasure to come and present the results of this efficiency audit to you tonight. So as Karen did mention, the efficiency audit is promulgated by the LBB. So the LBB sets the criteria and the procedures that are required to be performed as part of an efficiency audit. As Karen mentioned, the district is not seeking a tax rate election, but really just looking at this information to really evaluate operational efficiencies. The latest adopted budget did have expenditures exceeding revenues by approximately $77.4 million, and all the information that I will be presenting tonight is from the 2223 fiscal year. So this is the latest information that's available through PMS, that's available on TEA's website. So all this information was pulled from PMS data. We looked at the taper report, and we also looked at the actual financial data available on the PMS website. So as part of the procedures of performing an efficiency audit is identifying peer districts to evaluate the district's results against. So what we did is the TEA provides us with what they call a snapshot tool that allows you to go in and evaluate your district against similar districts. What we did is we primarily based this on enrollment. So we evaluated all districts that exceeded 50,000 in enrollment. There were 17 districts with an enrollment greater than 50,000. From that 17, we narrowed it down to 10, and those are the 10 that you see there above you or in front of you. Klein ISD had the lowest enrollment level with 53,000 students, and Houston ISD had the highest enrollment with 189,000 students. Also, when considering these peer districts, just for your information as we go forward with this, there are three districts that have an 8/31 year end, and there are seven districts with a 6/30 year end. Having a different year end can change the amount of fund balance that a district would need to maintain, so we'll talk about that more as we get into some of these results. Also, on average, the peer districts had about an M&amp;O tax rate, about two and a half pennies more than what Cyfair has. And also, five of these districts are recaptured districts, but recapture had been backed out and removed from these results, so we're just comparing apples with apples on all these So the first steps, you know, I think everyone has the report in front of them, so there's 22 required steps. I've taken those 22 steps. I've pulled out what I consider to be the meat of the test and have put that into this slide deck. So first, we start off with performance measures, so we look at accountability ratings. The district has an A rating and a 90 score compared to its peer districts that have a B accountability rating and a district score of 88. So when we look at performance measures, the district has a higher rating and higher score compared to the peer districts. When we look at the first rating, the district does have an A superior, superior achievement rating, and this is the 22nd consecutive year that the district has received an A rating. And what the first rating does is it evaluates the district's financial health. So it looks at financial measures and provides a rating, whereas the accountability rating looks at student performance. Next, we'll look at the student count and characteristics. So this table presented here is really just a gross representation of the number of students in each one of these characteristic columns. It's not meant to foot from left to right. So as you go through, you know, we can see Cyfair has 118,000 total enrollment. The peer district average is 92,000. And then when we look at each one of these categories, you know, students could fall into multiple categories. So you could have a student that's economically disadvantaged and also CTE. So this is not meant to foot or cross-foot. It's just a gross representation. One that's on here that's a little confusing that I do want to clarify is the English learners and the bilingual. Those two categories of students, they directly overlap with the difference being parents that have denied additional language services. So it's about 1,000 student difference between those, but otherwise they directly overlap with each other. The reason we look at these student characteristics is because they can both drive revenues that we get from state, and they can also drive expenses on how we use the monies to provide these children with an education. So when we look at the student characteristics as a percentage, we have the yellow column that is the peer district average, and then we have the red column, which is the state average. Really, just about every characteristic, the district does come in below its peer districts and the state average. So I think it's just an interesting representation. So we look at economically disadvantaged. Dallas ISD had the highest at 84.9%, and Frisco ISD had the lowest at 14.2%. So you can see that the district was basically in the midpoint. When we look at English learners and special education, Dallas ISD had the highest and Frisco had the lowest in both of those categories. For career and technology, Klein had the highest at 30.6, with Northside at the lowest at 21.1. So in every one of these categories, you can see that really the district was pretty close to the midpoint in all of these student characteristic buckets. Next, we'll look at the total revenue per student. So when this is evaluated, this includes all funds except for debt service fund and recapture. As I mentioned earlier, recapture is backed out of all these figures. And you can see that the district receives less money per student across these categories than both the peer district and the state average. One of the big measures is really looking at the local funding and the state funding in combination. Those two move kind of in inverse relationship with each other. But the district receives about $687 and $1,200 less per student in local and state revenue than both the peer districts and the state average. And I think what'll be a more telling sign is actually when we move to the next slide and see how we're using this revenue to provide services to students. But I also wanted to mention that in the federal bucket for the district, about $736 per student is made up of the ESAR funding, which it will be going away. So when you look at that number, really across the state and across the peers, you know, a good portion of that is ESAR funding that will be going away. So this next slide is looking at operating expenditures per student. Again, we're looking at all funds here excluding capital outlay and debt service payments. So just what's used for operations, and we have that broken out into a couple of different categories. We have instruction, which includes classroom instruction, library, and staff development; instructional support, which includes instructional leadership, school leadership, guidance and counseling, and social services. And then we have general administration, which is just general admin, basically the folks that work in this building. We have district operations, which include transportation, food service, maintenance and operations, security, and data processing; and then other, which is just community services. So for the district, that's going to be your daycare program, your after-school programs, your summer school programs is going to be included in this other category. But again, you can see that based on a per-student average, the district comes in below both the peer and the state district, which does coincide with, you know, doing more with less. Less revenue, less expenditures. But I think what's interesting is when we go to the next slide and we see how those expenses are then being allocated across these functional categories, so you can see that the district's largest allocation of these expenses per student go to instruction, which again, I think that kind of goes back to an A accountability rating and a 90 score. So for the district, the total amount that gets allocated to instruction is 66.3% compared to 61.1 and 58.9 for the peer districts and the state. Again, instructional support, 13.2 versus 16.9 and 16.1. General and administrative costs are lower than both the peer districts and the state average at 1.5 versus 2.2 and 3.3. District operations are at 18.1 versus 19.3 and 21.1. So really, you can, again, you can see that it appears that these expenditures are going primarily to the activities that, you know, we would all anticipate seeing these expenses go to, which is educating the students that attend this district. Next, we look at payroll and staffing data. So again, when we look at the expenses across these functional categories, 85.1% of all these expenditures are going towards payroll costs versus the district average or the peer district average and the state average of 82.7 and 77.8. The average teacher salary is higher than the peer district and the state average. Just to provide some additional context, though, when we put that and we compare it to the peer districts, Fort Worth had the highest per teacher salary at 67,000, and Northside had the lowest at 61,000. The percentage of teaching staff to total staff is 50.1%, which again, is greater than both the peer district and the state average. Student per teacher or student ratio to teaching staff is 15, so we have less students per teacher than both the peer districts and the state average. That carries over to total staff per student at 7.5 versus 7.6 and 7.2. And then teacher turnover ratio is the lowest across both the peer districts and the state average at 18.3% versus 19.4 and 21.4. So it may go towards a higher teacher salary maybe contributing to seeing a lower turnover compared to both the peer districts and the state average. And then the final measure that we look at is comparing the unassigned fund balance per student. So here you can see that the unassigned fund balance per student is at 3150 per student versus the peer district average at 3133. You can see that kind of tapering down over this five-year period. A lot of that's due to increasing costs in operations plus assigning fund balance into other designated areas. I think another important measure when we talk about this unassigned fund balance, though, you know, as opposed to looking at per student, is really looking at fund balance towards your operational targets. So the LBB required us to look at unassigned fund balances percentage of your three months operating expenses. And you can see here that, you know, for FY23, the district exceeded that three-month expenditure requirement by 40%. So it was at 140% of the three-month requirement versus your peer district average at 127.5%. So really, when we translate that into days of operations, so the district had 127 days of operations sitting in unassigned fund balance versus the peer district average that only had 115 days in operating expenditures. So again, the district outperformed its peer districts. So those are really, to me, kind of the meat of this efficiency audit, the procedures that we performed. Again, I think you can see that the district does a really good job of being very efficient in its operations, considering that, you know, it has less operating revenues to provide these services. And happy to answer any questions y'all may have.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Start to my left, Julie Light, go first. Any questions?
No, I have no questions. We received this presentation in the Finance Subcommittee, and it was, I've gone through the information in detail. I would encourage my colleagues to look at the actual report in detail to gather additional information, but thank you for the work that you did and for the concise presentation tonight. Thank you.
One of our members is remote, as you can tell. Wish her goodwill and her recovery. Christine, do you have any questions?
I guess, and just, thank you, Scott. In looking at that, the report, I guess the only question I have is that with the gap that we see, trying to articulate it, but is this attributed to the fact that we give the 20% homestead exemption, that we see less tax revenue due to that?
Yes. Christine, the reason is because of the local optional homestead exemption. And because of, we offer the local, then obviously we have less money to spend, so we have to adjust with, based on the revenue that we have.
Got it. Thank you.
Now, any questions?
Yes. I do, I'm going to use my phone because I did screenshot when I read the report. One question was on page six. I just wondered to know if you have seen good examples where it says 17B. Does the district's budget process include monthly and quarterly reviews to determine the status of annual spending? And that's something, I guess, since we're driving our goals and our strategic plan and the reporting and board reporting system, I just wondered what would that look like on a monthly basis? So maybe it's as much a question for you as it is for the administration?
Yeah.
Well, we have monthly financials that we evaluate and we compare them, we look at the budget and we compare to what our actual expenditures are. We also compare the general fund, which is our main operating budget, to the prior year and look at those variances. But we all look at it for every fund that is budgeted, that we're required to budget, as well as our grant funds as a whole, and review that information every single month for anomalies.
Yeah, I would definitely like an opportunity to see that monthly as a board as well, since it's been created. Also had highlighted on that page, there was a question about the evaluation, then I saw the data there about the annual evaluation of administrators, and I saw that that was a yes. I did have a question that I'll ask later with Doug. And when the question about district salary, salary bonuses or merit pay systems, I wondered, I think we said a yes. Are we counting on the fact that we're having the teacher incentive allotment coming forward, or how would we answer that one?
Yes, it's the teacher incentive allotment.
So it's not implemented, it's implemented, it's just not paying out yet, but that's what we're saying.
Right.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. Excuse me. Okay, here we go. Yeah, I was in the, we actually dodged a bullet a little bit by reporting on the 2223 year because we were a district, and I'm not sure that we would have come out the same in the next year with the challenges with new testing and other things. So, and I did notice, of course, we have a total of, like, I think all but nine campuses are reflected here, and then they didn't get rated if it was a D or an F. So I just felt like that was something where I wasn't sure how those numbers looked in the comparing, comparison districts about how many did not make a rating because they were D or F. But then also that we didn't require a campus turnaround plan. I think my question may be for Linda, because I think you do, Dr. Gory, your team do incredible work supporting campuses that we internally identify, correct? For extra support to make sure and coach and support those teams. Can you tell me a little bit about schools that required it versus schools that just are getting it because we want to be proactive?
Well, in the year that Mr. Peterson was reporting, we didn't have any campuses that didn't have, they all had a rating. They all had a rating that year.
Yeah, that wondered, because the total to 87, I think, 87 total on the chart, where I know we have 96 now, 97. So that's what made me wonder.
So we've added, added more campus, obviously, right? The, we had a high school and an elementary that we've added. We do have, we had, we had a school in the new accountability system, but not in that year that we earned. The last, the last accountability system where the district earned an A, we did not have a school that was a D or an F.
Yes, that's why I wondered about these totals, how we got to 87 on this chart. Is that correct?
Oh, that's right. The alternative campuses are included in there, and they're not evaluated. That's right.
Excellent. Okay. Are there enough to add up to the total not rated number?
Yes, yes, yes.
Excellent. Okay, I was like, whoa, I want to believe in this data. I just wanted to make sure. Okay, thank you. So that's our ALCs, Wyden Fern, Rodigim, all of those.
Carlton, Carpenter.
Carpenter, okay, very good. Thank you. Okay, one more question, or maybe more than one, just one second. So I did have a question about fund balance. I wanted to, it was definitely, we see it as a positive, and Karen and I have this conversation often, and I think she finally got me convinced that we needed to keep some fund balance, and obviously we had to go there this year with the budget. But I did, I think I noticed, was there a trend in our comparison districts to increase their amounts since 2019? It seemed like they were going up while we were kind of, like, maybe we led the way and maybe because of those crises and because they had to respond, now people are trending up in how much fund balance they're keeping. I don't like the idea of keeping money that we could spend this year on kids' needs this year. However, I think the state of things after COVID taught us that maybe it was smart, and of course, our current budget situation. So was there a trend in our neighboring systems or in our comparison group?
The only trends I can see are just what's presented in the table. You know, I can tell you, I did not go through each individual of the 10 to see what, you know, trends were happening within each one of those districts. I just looked at the total, similar to what's being presented in the table. But, you know, I think a lot of what, what the district is seeing is, you know, having fund balance available to get through the COVID crisis, obviously. And then I think what districts are beginning to do is then also reassigning some fund balance out of unassigned to assigned to designate funds for specific operational targets and goals.
Is that some of the practice we've ever had?
What we do is, what we assign is anytime we, there's been a deficit that's been adopted, we will assign fund balance to make sure it's saved for that, towards that deficit. We also have, like, self-funded programs, and we have our deductibles with our insurance. So we set aside that money so that it's available. Thank you.
Just for some clarity, too, so remember that a lot of these districts are, or a couple of these districts are, yeah, so they have a different fiscal year, so they, they need three months, but we have the July 1 through June 30. So we should really have four months.
There you go.
So, and then the other thing, too, I was noticing, I do see a little bit of a trend. It might be an average, but if we're two pennies behind what everybody else is assessing, then they could be bringing in some additional revenue, which they're building back their fund balance.
Yeah, that's interesting. I knew there was a chart. I'd seen it.
You know, across the 10 peer districts, too, knowing, you know, how they're designating their fund and resources, too, could, could vary year to year as well. So there's a lot of variability in those numbers.
And then I know, I do know at least one district in there had a voter approval tax rate election. But, oh, that comes out, never mind, that comes out, so.
It was very good to see our average payroll that is spent mostly on teaching and learning, the average teacher salary being higher than the comparison group, the average administrative salary being higher. I think those were real points of pride, along with the CTE numbers, Linda, to see that we had 30,000 versus the average of 22,000 students in all the other districts. I think that's incredible towards the goals that we've been talking about in all our different committee work. So I wanted to make sure and mention that also, yeah, of course, the...
Dr. Blasingame, part of that is because we offer our CTE programs at all schools, not just a select number, but all schools.
Excellent job, and I did see all those 120-plus courses that were presented at the community meeting, so continue the great work, making sure kids have options. And I did have one more, sorry, let me just pan to that, one more question that was about... Oh, I also wanted to comment on the turnover rate. Obviously, we have a committee, this is not a celebration, but this is, I'm glad to see that we actually have a lower turnover rate than our comparison group, but our commitment to our teachers is to continue. We'll hear an update from the different committee work, teacher retention, DEIC, and other places, where we're really looking at the teacher retention and recruitment committee to make sure that we are continuing to make us the best place to teach in the region and the state, maybe the whole nation. One last question, forgive me, because I had to... Actually, that'll be the last question. Thank you so much for your report. It was very great to see, to have a summary of some of these critical factors. I appreciate the efficiency and the neutrality of it. Thank you.
My pleasure.
All right, Todd, any questions? No? Lucas?
So as Julie mentioned, myself, Justin, and Julie, we saw this in the Subcommittee on Finance and Ops and went through it in detail, and thank you very much for your work. This was, I think, very timely and helps us and the community understand how well we're doing in terms of how we prioritize our kids, how we pay our teachers, and how we're spending our capital. I do have a comment a little bit along the lines of fund balance, and just really more for the public. Karen, so we've got from 2019 to this year, we see this trend where, can you flip to slide 11, please, just so we can, thank you. So Karen, we've got the trend where we're decreasing in our fund balance, and so those have been very important decisions that we've made in all of our budget meetings. We've done it on purpose, fully aware of what we're doing. We're always walking very closely against a line in the sand where we know that we cannot exceed a certain path, so it would impact our bond sales. So I really have two asks. One is, can you speak to our bond sales that recently occurred and the success we saw? And then secondly, could you address, you know, what this really means in terms of our fund balance and how it's been trending lower over time, and what some of the factors that went into that are?
Yes, I'd be glad to. Yes, the district, just last week, we sold our remaining 315 million in bonds, and I will, I proudly will say, we beat out the University of Texas sale, which they said is typically a big sale that people would be after, and so we were oversold by about six times. And what that does is, when it's oversold, is that it allows them to go in and look at each year and basically lower the interest rate that we would have to pay, so it reduces the cost to the district on the interest. And we were very, very pleased because we really thought it was going to be a little bit higher in where it came in as far as the bond sale, and we came in very good, better than we anticipated with the market, and lower than last year. in very good, better than we anticipated with the market, and lower than last year when we had our bond sale in twenty twenty twenty-three. Then, as far as fund balance is concerned, what our rating agencies look at is, do we have the capacity in fund balance that if, you know, enrollment drops, if property values are are exactly what we think they will be, to be able to pay debt service? But they look at all those different items, and if our fund balance is too low, then it could be a reason why they do not consider us stable, and they might lower our our rating for us. And where that impacts us is that if our rating is lowered, the the people that buy bonds, especially when it was competitive like it was, with the with all the different bond sales that are out there, what they look for is the districts that have the best underlying, what's called the best underlying rating. Because we have the permanent school fund, we are rated triple A, which is the highest rating. But then they go down and look at that underlying rating. And if we go to, if our fund balance dips too much, or they saw too much draw consistently, it would pack our bond rating and the cost to our taxpayers.
So when we look at this trend line, we see this, really, all the districts, ourselves and our peers, are all coalescing around this line. Can you explain what that line means?
Well, the line, the line really for would be is that, of course, they evaluated this on a per pupil basis. But the way the bond rating agencies, as well as the Legislative Budget Board, as well as Texas Education Agency, is they look at the number of months in expenditures that you have in fund balance. So typically, as Dr. Killian said, for a June thirty year end, I mean, for an August thirty-one year end, you need to have at least three months in fund balance. The lowest they recommend for a district that is a June thirty is four months in fund balance. The cushion that most people like to see and have is the five months, and the reason for that is we wait two additional months before our tax collections start coming in. And so we have to make payroll during that time out of fund balance.
So for, from our perspective, when we've had to make a decision in the last couple of bond, pardon me, budget cycles, and Julie, Scott, Natalie, myself, we were on the board that looked really hard at whether or not we were going to choose to approach our fund balance, to make a decision to fund a pay raise. And we did it with very much awareness of this exact line and the bond sale that we just had. And so the the diligence that Karen and her team have paid to advise us and help us understand the repercussions, Dr. Henry, when he was with us, he was aware of all of it and guided us as well, and Tom Jackson, and all of that. But we were able to successfully navigate a bond sale because we paid attention to these numbers. And, you know, there's been a lot of talk about our budget. This is the heart of it, right here. And we'll continue to be diligent so that we can be successful in the future, because, you know, there will be more schools that need to be built. No other comments.
Justin?
So thanks again for the presentation, and thank you for the presentation to the Finance Committee. We got a chance to look at this beforehand. And and one of the comments that I made is, and I echoed the comments this evening as well, is that this is probably some of the most useful information I've received as a school board member, because it paints a picture of our district, and it really shows what our priorities are. And, you know, the community needs to be made aware of this. I'm assuming, and I hope that this presentation will be available online for people to use. And it's going to be really important, because, you know, these talking points are going to be important, because it it paints a picture of what our priorities are as a school district, especially as community members and board members, and we're talking to our lawmakers about advocating for CFISD, especially in some of the funding discussions that we're going to have. And some of the key takeaways from this, and it's, it's really impressive and a testament to district leadership over the years, that as a district, in which we're the third largest school district, we receive less money than our comparative school districts per student. We utilize the lowest percentage of administration as compared to the other districts. As a matter of fact, compared to the state, our administrative percentage is half, under, you know, less than half of what their administrative ratio is. And that's for a district of this size and all of the features that we have, and all the things that we do to have an administrative ratio that low, I think, is very telling. And it shows that we work very, very lean, and we work very efficiently. In addition to that, we place a higher percentage of our expenditures in the actual classroom. And that's a goal, I think, you know, my colleagues and I all share that's a goal we want to continue to strive for, because it shows where we allocate our funds and our priorities, and we want that. We want those funds allocated to the classroom. And we also have, you know, even with all that, even with the fact that we're receiving less money per student, we're still paying our teachers more. So, you know, we want to make sure funds are in the classroom. We want to make sure that we're paying our teachers more. We want to make sure that we have an efficient and lean operation here. And I think those are goals that we want to continue to strive for. And I want the community to be made aware of that, have this information so as we continue to advocate for our district. So I think this was definitely an excellent exercise for us to undertake. I think it's useful information, and I hope everybody looks it over and reads up, reads up onto some more. So thank you very much.
And can I quickly just share that we will be posting? We will be posting it on the website, as well as providing a glossary at the back of it to explain some of the terms in case some people might not understand what goes into the various areas.
I did want to point out some interesting data that I, in the, especially looking towards later as we discuss our legislative priorities, but to do it while we're looking at this report. The costs for special education students, we definitely have had a large increase in the percentage of students who qualify for services, which if students need services, that is what should happen. But interesting as far as expenditures for special programs, for economically disadvantaged students, we spend six hundred and eighty-one per student served in, over other, all students. For the next amount, actually, bilingual ESL was the lowest at four hundred and seventy-nine. Next was career and technical education with one thousand three hundred and seventy-seven dollars. And then the next category, which is special education, is ten thousand five hundred and thirty-six more dollars per student. And I just thought that was interesting, as we're going to advocate for what we're looking to do. That was, that's just eleven point seven percent. Actually, it says as program budget as a percentage of the district budget is twelve point four percent. So that's a significant expenditure within our budget. Is there, and I think, is there any comparison? I think it really just goes to do with the student, the student count that we have, and I saw that we were higher than our peer districts, right? Houston and Dallas were higher, Julie?
In terms of total?
Total number of students that, or the percentage of students, or their spending?
Total number of students.
Yeah, they have more students, but I actually didn't see that comparison for their students. And then I just wanted to point out one other thing, because it's such a tough decision. I actually don't even like it, or I would love to be able to do something about our decision. But in transportation, if you looked at the expenditures for each of our comparison districts, the state average was, for transportation, was three percent. The peer district average was two point nine percent of the budget, and ours was three point five percent of the budget. So unfortunately, in looking at those places where that had to be considered, that shows you the math on on that, on that factor with transportation. So thank you for allowing me the moment.
I just want to add that we've, we've got a couple of things that we're going to be, actually, there's going to be four things that we're mainly going to be focused on when we, when we speak with legislators. We're going to show this report to them. Thank you so much. It's very detailed. This is, this is, I mean, pretty, pretty black and white as far as how efficient we're running our operation right now. And I just wanted to tell you guys, thank you for for putting this together for us. Thank you so much.
Thank you again. I just have a couple of quick questions. I know everyone had ended. You know, the district spends about, what, sixty-six point three percent of our operating budget right now on instruction, which is really higher than our peer average. Can we talk about how that really translates to better, to better student outcomes, Linda?
So, Mr. Henry, as, as Mr. Peterson shared, in the year that they looked at, which was the last year when there was an accountability rating, the district earned an A rating, higher than a number of the districts around here with a much lower economically disadvantaged population. And so all the additional support systems that we have in place at the campus, at that campuses that we had in place, and some we, we actually reduce, along with the district curriculum coaches and other support, certainly contributed to that.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you again. Go ahead, Doug.
Just real quick, I'd like to draw the board's attention to page fourteen of the report. And actually, Dr. Blasengame had already mentioned one of the categories. One of the things I was hoping for with this report was, could it draw us to an area to, to dig deeper, look for more data somewhere, where we might be able to find other areas where we, our peers were maybe spending less money than us, or we were, we were overspending. And what I saw in the report was exactly why we had so much trouble in the springtime trying to figure out what to cut, because we are very efficient. And so when you look at those, these are all function areas right here, from instruction all the way down to community services. We generally are spending less than our peers in all those areas except for instruction. And as Natalie pointed out, in transportation, and then it looks like food services. But that's still the state average, though. So I was disappointed to see that we didn't have an area to go to, but it also speaks to the quality of what's going on in the district in terms of the expenditures and how we, how we move money around and where we spend it. I think the bottom line is, our revenue being so much lower than our peers is part of our biggest issue. So without seeing more revenue, I think our biggest issue is going to be, what are we going to do to cut a budget that's already pretty, pretty, pretty tight? And so I worry about that. And I worry about the impact that we had in terms of the cuts that we had to do this, for this year, and what that's going to do to our future in terms of academics and all that. Because obviously, it was working, and it was working at a really efficient rate. And so that really, that that concerns me going forward. And then the other thing I would just add to that is that I don't know, in terms of, you know, in terms of tax rates, I'd have to look at these districts and see where they're at in terms of tax rate, because we are really low in terms of the tax rate. And we want to do that. We want to give value for our money and all. But at the same time, are we going to be able to maintain the, the staff we have and fill our positions if we don't stay at the top of the pay range for everybody? And then Natalie pointed out, too, that the special education numbers are growing. Those cost more and more numbers, more and more money to, in order to support. We have a gap in terms of what the feds give us, and the state gives us some more money, but it doesn't give us enough. And so it's a huge amount of money we're redirecting to support our special needs kids. And that will be one of the areas that we definitely need to focus on with our legislators, along with low HE funding and all that kind of stuff. It's, it's got to happen. Otherwise, we're going to be cutting in areas that I think we'll be concerned about with performance.
Scott, can I?
I would also say, one other thing on the chart where I think safety, security, safety and security are, it's like the job number one, so that you can do your main job. And it's really disconcerting that the state average is one point three percent. The peer districts is one point three percent, and we were one point two percent. And I think our, our police department and our team does an incredible job. But that's not a very high amount to keep our kids safe. And that's something else that, as we look at our legislative priorities, is really seeing that the funding, we fund, we spend so much more than is actually funded, and it's still only one point two percent of the budget. And so especially given the different risks we've had, seen, and everything heating up in our environment, war, all the things, I think that's something we can't ignore.
And Dr. Blasengame, we only get two point three million in safety and security funding.
Versus our spending of?
Of over, well, if you look at just police officers alone, it's about sixteen million.
Isn't it like thirty million total?
Yes, it's more than that. Yes.
I know when we advocated in Austin before Julie, and then the, that community flyer that was put out, that it was like thirty compared to, how much did you say they fund?
They fund two point three million.
Yes, thank you. That's definitely an area I would look for support in from the state.
Thank you again. Appreciate your time. Five B will be discussed on Monday. We'll now proceed to the public hearing portion of the agenda. Six A, the board will hold a public hearing at six PM on Thursday, October third, two thousand twenty-four, discuss the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three state financial accounting rating. Ms. Bowles, so yours.
Good evening, Dr. Killian, President Henry, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you the district's results for the School First Rating for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three fiscal year. FIRST stands for Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas, and we're required to hold the public hearing to share these results within sixty days of receiving the final FIRST rating. Once again, what you just heard from Greg, we earned the highest fiscal accountability rating of A, Superior Achievement, for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three fiscal year. We've earned this rating for twenty-two years now, and since the inception of the rating. Just a little bit of history on School FIRST. It was enacted by the Texas Legislature in nineteen ninety-nine as a method to hold school districts accountable for the quality of their financial management practices. It also ensures that districts are providing maximum allocation for instruction and evaluates the quality of financial management decisions. The School FIRST objectives, it's intended to be simple and understandable, applicable to all school districts, based on actual data that's reported to TEA through PEMS and through the Annual Financial Report. It also analyzes financial management efficiencies. It can bring to light early warning signs of financial distress, and it provides transparency to all stakeholders. Uh-oh. It's not going. Sorry. Okay, thank you. The School FIRST Rating System is based on twenty-one indicators. Two of those was not scored for this fiscal year, twenty-two, twenty-three. But out of the nineteen that were scored, we received the max points on eighteen of those indicators. So there are three categories of indicators that the district has scored on. The first category is the critical indicators, and failure of any of these indicators would be an automatic failure of School FIRST. There's four critical indicators, which include submitting the Annual Financial Report to TEA by the deadline of November twenty-seventh for June thirty year ends. Another critical indicator is to receive an unmodified opinion on the Annual Financial Report, which is the highest level of assurance that can be given on the financial statements. We also have to make timely payments for our debt into state and federal agencies such as TRS and IRS. The second category of indicators evaluates the district's solvency and are designed to detect early signs of solvency-related issues. There's ten indicators in this category, which include total net position, average change in fund balance, days of cash on hand, current assets to current liabilities, revenues to expenditures, budgeted to actual revenues, which was not scored this year, long-term liabilities to total assets, the correlation between future debt requirements and assessed property value, the administrative cost ratio, and the student to staff ratio. And the last category of indicators is financial competency. These indicators are designed to show the quality of district management decisions and financial management practices. There's seven indicators in this category, including actual average daily attendance to the pupil projections, which was also not scored this year, the PEMS to Annual Financial Report variance, material weakness, material noncompliance, financial transparency, the impact of funding discussion, and FSP repayment plan. And more detail and explanations of each of these solvency and financial competency indicators, as well as other required disclosures are included in the Annual Financial Management Report, which you all were provided in advance at the meeting. And this report will also be on our district's website. There is one indicator I'd like to highlight, and that's indicator number thirteen, which is the administrative cost ratio. And this one is a little bit different than what Greg just reported on. It's calculated, what he showed earlier was just general administration only. This one is actually general administration and instructional leadership divided by instruction, library media services, staff development, and counseling expenditures. So for districts with more than ten thousand students, we're allowed an administrative cost ratio up to eight point five five percent. But as you can see, CFISD has been well below this threshold for many years, and we're at three point five four percent. And for further comparison, I'd like to show the administrative cost ratio for a few of the area's school districts and larger districts across the state. As you can see, one of the highest in the area is spring at nine point nine one percent. Dallas, the second-largest district in the state's at ten point seven three percent. Houston, the largest district in the state's at five point five three. And again, we're at, the third-largest district is at three point five four percent. And additionally, I confirm with TEA, CFISD is actually the fourth lowest administrative cost ratio out of a thousand-plus districts in the state. This concludes my presentation. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you very much. I'll have to start to my right this time. Todd, do you have any questions? Todd, do you have any questions?
It just seems like we're being penalized for being so efficient at this point. So great job. I talked about earlier today, and, you know, obviously with the funds that we're allocated, I mean, we're doing an incredible job. I mean, proof's in your report. Appreciate you doing this for us. And again, this will help us with the legislators when we meet with them. Again, four talking points that we're going to be focused on, local optional homestead exemption, transportation as well, and obviously, the huge gap between our special ed spending and what we're being reimbursed from the state. In addition to, let's see, oh, safety and security, obviously. So those are going to be our main talking points. I also might add, we might, with the ADA, everything being based on the ADA, maybe also talking about maybe splitting that up to maybe, you know, proposing to our legislators, maybe 50% of our of our allocation be based on enrollment, 50% on ADA. Maybe moving forward, maybe that might help out as well. Thank you again for the report.
Of course, thank you.
Lucas, any questions?
No, just thank you, Karen and your team, for putting together this effort. And it just demonstrates what we've known and talked about for a long time. The sale that we just had is evidence of all of the work that you see here, because this work is how we got those bond ratings. So that's great work. And to Todd's point, this allows us and equips us to go have a good message to our legislators to make the case for us to get the funding that we need, and to make sure that we have very concise, direct talking points backed up with data. Thank you.
Justin?
No, just good job, team. 22 years straight of being an A-rated district financially, all with less administrative staff than all the other districts. So great job. Thank you, guys. Keep up the great work, and we're very appreciative of your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Julie?
No questions. Thank you, Amanda.
Thanks.
Christine, any questions from you?
Yeah, thank you for the report and the presentation. Very helpful. The one thing that I noticed is that our actual collection rates on taxes, what we actually receive into the district, has gone down. Karen, can you speak to that?
Yes. Basically, what it is, is the comparison years, if you look at the years prior to the 2223 that we're comparing to, those include delinquent tax collections. And the current year does not, that we were reporting on, does not include delinquent tax collections. So that's the difference. So as, so really, 2223 will improve as, for example, when we show it to you next year, because it will include delinquent tax collections in with that.
Totally makes sense. Thank you.
And I had asked a question, and maybe it can go to Amanda, or it can go to Karen, whoever's ready, but I, really great work. I'd like to see your smile as you present this year as well, because you know it's really, really great work. And I'll, you know, I echo what my colleagues have said. I did ask the question on the only, the one indicator that wasn't at full points. And I think we've had this in the past, I've asked, but I do think the public understanding, we've been a fast-growth, a fast-growth district, we've had big bonds. And so I just wanted to, if you could explain which indicator is the one that did not receive full points on the, I think it's indicator 12, per Karen. If you could just describe a little bit about that indicator and why we didn't get full points, but how it's, you know, it's a healthy, it's still healthy, is I guess my point.
Yes, that would be indicator number 12. That was the one that looked at the correlation between future debt requirements and the district's assessed property value. We lost, out of 10 points, we got eight points, so we lost two points. Our total rating overall was a 98. That one, it's really intended to evaluate the district's ability to make principal and interest payments. But that indicator looks at long-term debt overall. So when we go to set our tax rate, our INS tax rate, that rate can only be to pay for next year's debt, bonded debt. And so this ratio is really penalizing us. It's making it look like we have to set, based off of our assessed property value, a tax rate to pay off 20-plus years' worth of debt, which is not the case. So most districts, most districts that have bond programs lose points on this indicator. About 76% of districts, only, only 76% of districts receive the full points on this indicator.
Just probably larger and faster growth districts that don't get it. Okay, thank you for explaining that.
Absolutely.
Is that it?
Yeah, that's all. Thank you so much. Great work.
Some other questions to Doug, actually. With our administrative costs, cost ratio being extremely low, you know, below the threshold, how does that impact instructional quality going forward? Because I, that's always a thing I fear, is not having enough managers and people to actually manage the staff and stuff. How does that affect that, from what you've seen in your past and experiences here?
Well, look at Dallas's administrative cost ratio being so high. Dallas is quite successful, considering their economically disadvantaged numbers, their extreme poverty and all that. So they, they put extra supports out there for our classrooms, along with administration, right? So I do think, long-term, that's probably contributing to the stress of our administrators on the campus, and having to do all the walkthroughs and all those kinds of things. All those things will be challenges going forward. So, yeah, I think it's actually something that tracks from being so low. Do you really want to be the lowest? I get why you want to do that for efficiency purposes, but you're also taxing the the system in terms of how we can support and monitor and all that.
Thank you. Thank you, Amanda. And team. 6B, the board will hold a public hearing on the adoption of the 2024 tax rate at 6:00 PM, Thursday, October 3. Karen?
We'll see if we can get this working. Thank you, President Henry and members of the board. Tonight, I'll provide a brief presentation on the recommended 2024 tax rate. The board approved the 2425 budget in June, but the tax rate cannot be adopted until the district receives certified values from the Harris Central Appraisal District. The district receives certified values on August 30, and we must adopt our tax rate within 60 days of receiving certified values. The M&amp;O rate is made up of two components. It's the maximum compressed rate and enrichment pennies. The maximum compressed rate is compressed or reduced to the lower of the state compressed rate or the local compressed rate. Tax compression occurs whenever property values increase by 2.5% or more from the previous, from the previous year. Current-year property values affect tax compression. Since the district's local values increased more than the projected state values, the maximum compressed rate will be based on the local compressed rate of .6169. State funding is based on the current year state, is based, or is based on current year state control or property values, which, as a reminder, do not recognize that the district provides a local optional homestead exemption. For tax year 2024, the total tax rate, based on the methodology mentioned above, would be 1.0669, with an M&amp;O tax rate of .6669, and the interest in sinking rate of 40 cents. When increased costs are incurred due to a disaster, and the governor or the president has declared a disaster, disaster pennies or additional pennies may be adopted without a voter approval tax rate election, as the disaster pennies can only be accessed for one year in the year after the disaster occurred. The district must specify the disaster declaration. In January 2023, a tornado impacted Harris County, and the governor declared a disaster. Soon after, the district issued a RFP for our property insurance in April of 2023. The premiums increased 39%, and the windstorm deductible went from 100,000 per campus or per building to 3% of the building value. Just like homeowners, the district, these recent disasters have impacted our premiums and our deductibles. CFISD, as well as other districts across the state, began researching the impact of these disasters on the rising cost of property insurance. And I want to even mention that the legislature, actually, one of the things they looked at is the impact of rising property insurance in their interim hearings on school districts. Although the district did not suffer extensive structural damage from this disaster, we were able to confirm this summer that property insurance premium and premiums and the deductible increases qualified as an increased expenditure as a result of recent disasters. Fast forward, damages from the recent storms have emphasized the impact of the windstorm deductible increasing from 100,000 to 3% of the building value. This, again, would be a one-time increase, but the property insurance increase is ongoing. Even though our area was not impacted by Hurricane Helene, the cost incurred because of that will impact future property insurance premiums. The tax rate options for 2425 are, the first option is, I'm sure that shows up, the first option is the tax rate just shared in the previous slide of 1.0669, which would decrease the annual taxes paid on a $350,000 home by $25.56, but it would provide no additional revenue to the district. The next option would be to keep the tax rate flat at what it is this year, which is 1.0811, and that would allow us to access 1.42 disaster pennies because of the tax compression that occurred, which would not increase taxes on the home, but would result in additional 24 million in revenues for CFISD. The third option would be to increase or access to disaster pennies. The tax rate would increase by a half a penny, which is an increase in annual taxes paid on a $350,000 home of $10.44 or 87, 87 cents a month, and result in an additional 33.9 million in revenues. After discussing the options with the Finance and Operations Committee, administration is recommending the district access to disaster pennies. Note that school districts are allowed to, they could access as many as 12, well, for us, we could access as many as 12 additional pennies, but we would not recommend that. We believe that that would not be prudent. To illustrate the impact of the local optional homestead exemption on taxpayers and the district, a homeowner with a value of $200,000 has a reduction of 40,000 in taxable value, resulting as a, as a decrease of $435 in property taxes. On a $350,000 home, the optional homestead exemption provides a reduction of 70,000 in taxable values, which is a decrease of 761 in property taxes. However, offering relief to our residents results in a decrease of 63 million in revenue, since the state funding formula provides funding as if we do not offer a local optional homestead exemption. The proposed 2020, or the recommended 2024 M&amp;O tax rate would be .6869. The district lowered the interest in sinking tax rate one cent from, from 41 cents to 40 cents after passing the 2014 bond. As you can see, the proposed INS tax rate remains at 40 cents. The increase in property values, along with favorable refundings and selling new money bonds at record-low interest rates, have allowed the district to reduce the INS tax rate and still meet our current debt service requirements. The total proposed tax rate would be 1.0869. And before I turn it over for questions, Dr. Killian, did you have anything that you would like to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, so we don't take increasing taxes lightly, obviously. And in this situation, we have a disaster, and we have an ongoing disaster that's going to affect us going forward with our increased insurance rates for the foreseeable future. So this is just one-time money that we'd be able to access, and it would be gone next year, because we wouldn't be able to assess that same two pennies for this disaster. So that's why our recommendation is to do this. The other thing that it will do for us, too, is, as you recall, this year, we have a budget shortfall as well. Even with the $50 million cuts that we did, we're going to end up with about, what is it, about $70 million shortfall in our budget?
Our deficit is, that we budgeted deficit was 77 million.
Yeah. So with 77 million budget deficit, and we're still looking at Shar's issues with billing that we, we may not be able to access to, even though the commissioners asked for exceptional item to help fund that kind of stuff, we were really thinking it would be fiscally prudent to ask for the disaster pennies, and then move forward from there. And then remember, this, it'll revert back to the tax rate that's compressed after this year. Hopefully, we don't continue to have disasters in our area going forward. And then that also buys us a little bit of time, too, for us to work on the legislative priorities that we have, and try to get that special funding for LOHE, and also for special education, gap funding that we, we have issue with, and also the safety, security. And as was pointed out, potentially lobby for some additional transportation money that really hasn't changed much since the 1980s. So with all of that in consideration, we would be able to slash, or at least cut the deficit enough to where I would recommend that if we did this, we, we probably don't do any cuts in the spring semester. Actually, I would recommend that we wouldn't do any cuts in the spring semester, and then wait for what our legislative efforts do, and be able to tell our employees, hey, we're not going to do any more cuts, we're not going to hurt our programming for our community anymore, and we'll be able to use some of our fund balance and maybe stretch out what we do there for a longer period of time without making any additional cuts, and hope that we can get some of that money generated at the state level.
Questions to my left? Christine, do you have any questions? Oh, sorry, go ahead, Christine.
Sorry, so the current tax rate is 1.081, is it?
That's correct. The current tax, the 2023 tax rate was 1.0811.
Well, I'm not in favor of taxing, or I'm concerned, obviously, about taxing our, our neighbors and our community to put anything on them. And so I'm looking at this, and I know it's a very difficult and awkward position that we are in. I'm concerned about raising taxes on our community. That's my comment.
Natalie, go ahead.
First of all, as a matter of procedure, I really love our committee structure. I think it's amazing. I think we'll be able to get great work done in small concentrated groups. However, the transparency piece, for me to get a suggestion of a tax rate just in my board agenda feels out of, like, a little bit, like, a bigger issue that maybe, as we look at our way we operate, maybe we can discuss having, like, workshops or something like that. Karen, thank you for your explanation as to why. So I do understand procedurally what happened because of the timing of, and maybe you can explain that, like, why you weren't able to bring it to the board before, you know, to the whole group within the meeting structure.
Great. Yes, Natalie. Basically, we can, we, number one, we can't set our tax rate till we get certified values. Harris County is always very late in getting values. Many school districts receive their values late July. It's, they're due by July 25. We got ours on August 30, our certified values. And we have to go through a very complex truth and taxation calculation that we're required to put in our budget book. In addition, we had to post the, the meeting in the, in the paper, and you're required to do that 10 days prior to discussing the tax rate. So based on the timing of when our September board meetings were, this, we weren't, we could not bring it to you at the September board meeting.
So thank you. I just want to make sure, because it's, you know, for me, it's, this is critical information, and it's, I didn't get it in a manner where I felt like I could have a chance to discuss it thoroughly. But I understand why, and as we make our HCAT nomination tonight, and maybe that's something we can ask that board to work on, to make sure they definitely get districts that information on time. So given, the next question I have, then, is, we just heard from Weaver. In fact, in their report, they said to us, don't spend one-time money on a permanent cost. So to me, this one-time money of emergency pennies, being as a solution towards some long-term costs, it feels like it's, to me, that's, it might be, quote, fiscally prudent, but I'm not sure if that is fiscally prudent. What was the principle he just said? It was something in the report where he basically made the point that, and if we're going to, what we're going to do with the dollars is raises or that kind of stuff, those are permanent costs, right? So we still are gambling with the fact that the legislature will come through with something or not with these one-time funds.
Well, the, what, what, what the one-time funds are allowing us to be able to do is several things. Number one, it's to offset our Number one, it's to offset our increased costs associated with our insurance premiums, but then also, it allows us to be able to, as Dr. Killian shared, maybe add a little bit to fund balance so that we can let our teachers know and our staff know that we will not be proposing any cuts in the '25-'26 school year. And that is just because we want to see what the legislature does, and if we have that little bit of cushion, it will give us that leeway to be able to see what happens to be before we make a decision.
But permanent costs, insurance is a permanent cost, and staff is a permanent cost, correct?
But the insurance cost is going to be there regardless, and this is just helping offset that cost for, you know, temporarily, yes, but the thing is, is it's helping fund balance because of that, and it helps us be able to wait till the, what we see with the legislature does, as well as what all our budget cuts, you know, when the year's over, exactly where we are and what the impact was as far as our revenue items that we were looking at to try to increase revenues. It provides that additional time so that this coming spring, we're not going to have to go in and make cuts.
Well, I would say, another thing we bring up often, the daisies, is that our teachers and our paraprofessionals are also our citizens and our taxpayers, and we know we didn't provide the kind of raise we wanted to, to keep up with inflation, and now we're basically coming back to say we want to tax a little bit higher on the same people that were concerned we're not paying enough to keep up with inflation. So, I'd make the statement, I would be comfortable with doing something that kept the rate, got us 24 million, but did not raise taxes. I'm not interested in raising the taxes for our community, especially our staff and our teachers, who are a large part, a number of our citizens and taxpayers. So, it's almost like I'm giving this hope for the raise to continue your jobs, but I'm also taking from your bottom-line pocket. And especially for our paraprofessionals, who really are barely on that line of working, you know, making a working wage, and the concerning bus drivers, all those positions that are, so, I would say that that's, it's almost like regressive taxation from the lottery to me. So, anyway, I just would make that statement. I would be supportive of it, even though it is an increase of the 0.014 of those disaster pennies, at least it is not a tax increase to our taxpayers.
To my right, any questions? Comments? Go ahead.
Karen, when we look at slide, what slide is this? I don't have page numbers. So, it's the 2024 tax rate options, 2024-25 tax rate options. Can we put that slide up? There you go. So, that third column, can you describe what those numbers mean, the $25, the $10.44?
Yes. What that is, is I compared, basically, what the increase to the taxpayer would be on a $350,000 home compared to the 2023 tax rate. And so, the $10.44 is the amount that the annual tax rate would, tax collection for that house on a $350,000 home would go up.
So, what you're saying is that, staying at the current 1.0811 tax rate, there would be no increase or decrease. At the 1.0669 decreased tax rate, there would be a $25 annual decrease in taxes.
Correct.
And that at the 1.0869, there would be a $10.44 annual increase in homeowner's taxes, correct?
Correct, on a $350,000 home.
Got it. So, we're talking about $10 annually on a $350,000 home.
Correct.
Understood. Thank you.
I just want to touch on a little bit of high-level math, so we kind of know the implications, the broader implications that we'd be facing depending on whatever tax rate we were to undertake on Monday. So, we're looking at, if nothing is done with the legislature, we're looking at about a $70 million deficit next year, correct? So, there are, there are three ways that we could fill that $70 million. We can make more cuts, which, you know, Dr. Killian pointed out, that through our efficiency audit, there's not anywhere that we really want to cut, and that would actually start affecting classroom instruction. So, that's very, very concerning to try to find another $70 million from where we are right now. That's very concerning, right? If we were to implement a tax rate of 1.0811, which would have no increase in property taxes, that would bring us approximately $24 million in revenue, which then, we would then, again, with that $70 million deficit, we'd have, we would then have to find $46 million, right? So, then we have to find $46 million, and then that could be, that could be a combination of cuts or fund balance. So, one of the questions I have, Karen, is, if we were to actually keep the disaster, keep the tax rate at 1.0811. So, before I get to my question, but however, if we went to the proposed tax rate, in which it's a $33.9 million district revenue increase, that means that the plan would then be going into next year's budget, that to, to address that $70 million deficit, we would pretty much be splitting it in half. We would use half of the tax revenue, and then we would use probably fund balance, right? So, I guess my question, then, is, if we read, so, we're going to draw down our fund balance, and my colleague to the right discussed that this evening about the importance in fund balance, and we've discussed, you know, over multiple meetings. If we were to draw that fund balance down more, say, from that 35 million to the 46 million, what kind of impact would that have with the fund balance? Would that get us below the critical amount that we would need?
No, neither one of those would get us below the critical amount that we need for the current, for the current year.
That answered my questions for this evening. Thank you.
To further follow up on that question, our budget increased because we have higher rates going into next year. I know you said 70 million, but is that, does that incorporate all the expenses going forward, including insurance rates and other things? And, I mean, that's with zero pay increase as well, correct?
Well, that's, no, the 77 million, that included our pay increase that we did of the 2% for our teachers and our auxiliary staff and our paraprofessionals, and then the 1% raise for the remaining employees, administrative staff. So, that includes, that we took into consideration the raise, so.
Okay, you did.
It is included in that. And also, the fact that we reduced our vacancy rate to where we had a fill rate of 98%. So, we also took that into consideration.
Karen, I do, I do have another question. So, if we remain at, if we get to the 1.0, 1.0811 tax rate, we, taxpayers are going to be paying increased taxes anyway, for us to generate the extra revenue of $24 million anyway, right?
The tax rate would mean the same as it is currently.
Yes.
So, the current tax rate is 1.0811. So, if we did, kept it at that, then they would not be paying more taxes on a $350,000 home.
Just, just for clarity, though, and I just want to stress this for everybody, too. So, if you look at that chart, it's $10.44 is what's noted to go to the two pennies of disaster, but remember, they're already getting a compression to $1.0669. So, technically, you would have to add the 2556, because most people would see the 2556 on a $350,000 home. So, it'd really be $35, or $36 roughly, is the different, the delta that we're talking about here. Yeah, we can say that the $350,000, it remains constant, but it really doesn't when you get down to it, because there, there's a compression there that we're, we're not allowing them to have by putting the two pennies in. I just wanted to be really clear on that, that, yeah, it, from, if you happen to have a $350,000 house, and it didn't go up in value, and you still had $1.0811 tenths or whatever, then, yeah, absolutely, it would be flat, but you know those things move, right? Here's the other thing, too. It's not, it's not that we're trying to pay recurring costs for, with this, right? We will have some recurring costs, obviously, because of the, the rise in our property value, property insurance, but we're trying to mitigate what we're using in terms of fund balance to pay for that cost, right? And if we don't do something like this, and we just rely only on the legislature, what if they don't come through for us? What if they only partially come through for us? Then, we're in a situation next year where we really need to start thinking about cuts, but think about it, they're going to be meeting through May. We may not have an idea about what they're going to do until May. Well, our budget is due before that. We're really need to, we really need to be crunching numbers well before that. And then think about this, too. I saw a sign up here about bus, buses and returning bus service. We had to cut bus service just to balance the budget this year, right? So, what does that put us in next year when we're looking at all this stuff? So, I just would caution you about not going ahead and doing the disaster pennies, because it will set us up to where we potentially don't have to make cuts next year, we can use some of our fund balance, and then, if it doesn't happen, then we're going to have to make some decisions in '25-'26 during that school year about what we're going to do, because we don't have a legislative session coming up. We've got two-year, two-year budget that we're dealing with. So, I just caution you, you know, we can spend some fund balance down to, you know, take care of some of our issues, but 70-something million dollars is a lot, and we'll have some delta there. We'll probably have some unfilled positions that probably end up bringing that down overall, and we're going to have some revenue. We don't know how much that additional things that we have, you know, we're going to potentially generate money at the Berry Center, we're going, we're having naming rights up, but, you know, we just don't know what that number is really going to be, and it's probably not going to be anywhere close to that kind of money. What did we get the last time we sold naming rights? What's the highest amount that you remember in your experience for naming rights?
I would, I would, don't have that information for the district.
Yeah.
I can only speak to one I dealt with at my prior district, so I'm not sure.
What was that?
It was, it was $10 million.
$10 million.
And it was very unusual that it, the particular situation, they said we just were at the right place at the right time with the naming rights, and it would probably never happen again.
Yeah. And it's back when also, I mean, at one point, we had Coca-Cola, Pepsi, all vying for naming rights and things like, or giving us extra money for exclusive contracts and all that, but that just doesn't happen anymore, so. And I could tell you that bus, bus ads doesn't generate a lot of money, and there's a lot of different revenue situations, inventive ones. This is, this is actually something that's allowable, it's allowable for a reason, because we had a disaster, right? One-time money is all it is. It's a one-time piece on the taxpayer, which I am now a taxpayer. So, I understand it, but, and I understand the apprehension about the taxes, but also remember, in that report, too, our efficiency and the fact that we get less money than our peer districts, and the fact that our tax rates, you know, when you start looking at that, we're, we're lower as well. So, just, just thoughts.
I have a question for Karen.
Go ahead, Christine.
Karen, is there a timeline or a deadline on this?
Yes, we have to adopt the tax rate on Monday.
And just remember, too, that several of you noted in your board comments that you regretted the decision to cut transportation. Well, I don't know where we go for the money, then. I mean, because 60-something percent of our expenditures are in instruction, so there's not, looking at the efficiency piece, there's not a lot of, either, you have two sides of your ledger, your revenue and your expenses. So, we've already cut significantly to a level that we don't even like, and we've already shown in the efficiency audit that it's tight. There's not a lot of places to go, so this would at least bring in some temporary revenue that can offset some of the increased costs that we've had.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll move on. Thank you very much, Karen. The board will now review the following consent agenda items, then review the following items, they may remove or change things, and vote on individually. If any board member has a question regarding an item, please ask to be recognized for the consent agenda items. 7A, the board consider approving minutes of the September 9, 2024 board meeting. 7B, the board consider approving a memorandum of understanding from Harris County Public Health for the Community Health and Wellness Division, Dental Health and Prevention, Super Smile Services, Mobile Dental Services. Go ahead.
On that one, I did have a comment. I did have a citizen reach out to me, concerned about the concept of whole child and that, in loci parenti, basically, if we, as a school, are ever operating as, in the place of the parent for any of these services. And so, I did note in, read in the, all the notes on the board, that this is obviously done, it's been done for years, and it's formed, signed by a parent and a guardian in order for the services to happen. So, I just wanted to mention that, because I do think parents have the, parents are the ultimate authority over their child, parents are the ultimate, you know, people who should be making decisions about their child's health in any which way, vision, hearing, anything that that might mean. And so, I do see that that is covered in this situation here, and I do know that if this is like the See to Succeed program, where students who have been, definitely assessed that they have a need for the glasses, or being able to get free glasses, and glasses are very expensive, so I can definitely see the upside for our students at this school, but I just want to make sure and mention that concern, and make a statement that we don't stand in loci parenti. We, parents are the authority, and we are here to help partner with our community and
7C, the board will consider approving on second reading additions, revisions, or relations to district policies. We do have one speaker, Ali Fixpatrick, come forward, please.
This board has talked a lot tonight about transparency and how important it is. At the last board meeting, you all discussed not letting the public see changes that were made to district policies. You would just post the new policies, and then we would have to go back and dig through to compare them. That's unacceptable. We shouldn't have to do that. Mr. Scanlon, at the last board meeting, you said you wanted teachers to post their lesson plans online and be accessible for parents to easily find them, correct? You did. I can show you. The public deserves the same respect and the same right to review all the policies, see why you made the changes, understand why the changes were necessary in the first place. Not doing so is breaking the trust of the public, and you guys can't afford that right now. This is some low-hanging fruit for you to gain the public's trust back, because you don't have it. We deserve a full picture, we're intelligent human beings, and we're not going to be confused. Thank you.
7C1, DEA, local compensation benefits, compensation plan revision. 7C2, DF, local termination of employment revision. 7C3, FEA, local attendance, compulsory attendance revision. 7C4, FFI, local welfare, freedom from bullying revision. All right. 7D, the board will consider approving the construction proposals, contracts paid from bond funds, recommended contract and authorized superintendent designated to execute the following contracts. 7D1, 2022 ISC and ISC West revisions. 7D2, 2023 Windfrom High School repurpose. 7E, the board will consider approving bids, contracts, and authorizing purchase orders recommended for posted agenda item. 7E1, central packaging for nutrition services. 7E2, HVAC condenser and cooling tower water treatment and cleaning services. 7E3, maintenance fleet vehicle for nutrition services. 7E4, paint and miscellaneous supplies. 7E5, warehouse material handling equipment for nutrition services. Will now proceed to the non-consent agenda items. 8A, the board consider approving the 2024, we've already talked about that, tax rate, which will be discussed on Monday. It's going to be estimated collection rate for 2024 to be 100%, I'm sorry, it's different, and 2023 excess debt collection rate to zero. Any questions for Karen? 7, 8B, the board consider 2024 tax rate resolution support the 2024-2025 maintenance operations and debt service budgets by settling the 2024 MNO interest and sinking rates. 8C, the board will consider taking action on resolution cash in ballot for the choice of nominee to serve on the board directors for Harris County Appraisal District HCAD. I believe- I believe that was in your packet as well. Go ahead, Natalie.
I would just make a statement in support of the recommendation of Artyna Lamont-Dixon. She has served on that, actually serves as a chair. She is a trustee, understands deeply the, the complications of being a school district and how the impact of that actions, including this idea that we haven't gotten our certified values on time. And I've been able to work with her on some legislative priority items, and I've seen her values and her experience be very effective. And so I think she'd be a great representation of our district.
Thank you. 8D, the board consider approving on first reading revisions, deletions to district policy. 8D1, DFE, local termination employment resignation revision. 8E, the board consider making termination and good cause nonexist for the individuals listed as posted in the agenda item. This item will be discussed in closed session later on. You have a question on 8D?
Sorry.
Nope.
The one that's about five days versus, is that this one? I didn't want to, is that E1? I read them also. Resignation revision?
That was 8D.
Yes.
You have a question about that?
Yes. Yeah, I have concern that basically we wrote a policy for a reason, and now we're basically just saying up to five years, so it does nothing. And so I'm wondering about whether even we need the policy if it's that way. I would be, I understand the idea about the critical asset that teachers are, and so I do think I might consider less years in then, but have it be an absolute number versus it just saying up to, which actually doesn't, what does that mean? What does up to five years mean? Maybe I'll ask Deborah what that means.
I think we agreed on three to five years, so three years definitely, and up to five years, and then you have that discretion between the three and five. Marnie, would you agree?
And the discretion would be the administration.
Correct.
And the policy at this point just says up to five, so I think that's very different than between three and five.
I think we, go ahead.
What Dr. Stewart, I think what she meant to say, when we were in the policy committee, we talked about, the policy is the, the board says, and we decided for an employment policy, that was our recommendation. Operationally, we've always done that, because the superintendent hires everyone in the district, except for obviously himself, myself, and the internal auditor. So this is a policy that the board, we were wanting the board to codify what we were doing in practice, which was that if you broke your contract, and again, just to be clear, this, these are individuals who have left, they did not have good cause, they were provided ample opportunity to, to meet the statutory standard, they are not following their contractual obligation to the district. If that's the case, some districts never rehire you. But we said if there was a situation where someone reestablished, for instance, reliable attendance in another district for a period of time, and that's what we were trying to decide, when might we consider them? In practice, we were looking at five years. There was discussion last month with the board that that was understood, but what if there was a critical shortage area? Or what if there was something, was there some flexibility for the, those situations? So we said we would take it back to policy committee. And so in policy, we talked about, you know, the policy needs to say up to, and that communicates that the board wants the superintendent to have discretion for those situations, but that would be through administrative regulation. And so that's what Dr. Stewart was talking about. We said we would recommend through Human Resources, having an administrative regulation that would guide the staff that, you know, does the day-to-day hiring, that generally speaking, the floor would be the three years. And I made a Top Gun reference and said, you know, the hard deck would be three years, and we wouldn't go below the hard deck, but that there could be, you know, up to the five years in that, in that headway, that if there was a situation where, again, critical shortage area that you mentioned, they, you know, reestablished reliable attendance in another district for an extended period of time, or some other circumstance that we wanted to have that discretion, then we would utilize that for that two years. So that's why it says up to five years. But again, it's, it's codifying in policy, because that's a best practice, and that's what I recommended to Human Resources, that we put it in a policy. And if we don't want to say five years, we want to have discretion, then I recommend you do that in an administrative regulation. And that's where the three to five years came from.
However, regulation, regulation is not policy, right? So this is policy. So basically, you could be hired next year, or if you, you could, in theory, under this policy, be able to be rehired the next year, which is not enough time to reestablish in another district consistent attendance, or have shown a remediation of, of that behavior. So I feel concerned, because regulations are, don't come before the board, and regulations are not policy. So I would feel more comfortable if our policy had a floor, whatever deck, sorry, lost the Top Gun analogy. But I would feel better if that was what policy was. To me, yes, this may clean up this idea that we have a policy, but it doesn't say anything in essence. It says it's up for interpretation. And I do think it's very serious that you would leave your contract and leave children in a classroom without the instruction they needed that year. And we're so, our, our team does an incredible job from Human Resources, that team of being so incredibly fair with people. So that's why I would, I'll just make that comment. I'm not sure this policy has the, it doesn't put in policy what I would hope the message we're sending about the seriousness of leaving students in their classroom.
Yeah, I totally get that. I, I think we went back and forth about taking it out. I know that, that Todd had actually said something about, why don't we just leave it open and then leave it to administration to address? Because quite frankly, I would not want to bring somebody back that abandoned a classroom, especially after all the hard work that Deb's folks do. And so I, you know, I would have a hard deck, too. So I would just say that, you know, three, three years would be a minimum of what I would want to see in terms of folks establishing something new. So anyway.
I think, Dr. Stewart, can you also talk about maybe some other reasons why we would be flexible in that, in our, in our discussions on, at the policy committee?
Sure. And then I'd just like to clarify, as Dr. Killian said, we went back and forth from three to, three to five, and so I was unclear that we had moved to up to five. There may be a situation that after the, what I was thinking was the three years, that there may be an extenuating circumstance that employment, someone left because their spouse moved, and they did not have the proper documentation to show that their spouse moved, but, or was relocated, but they were an excellent employee, and it was a hard-to-fill position, a special ed position perhaps, and that we would create the criteria with that may be someone that we would consider before the five years. So those situations would vary. Based on need, yes, thank you.
Any other discussion on that? If this is first reading, there is a chance at the second reading as well, so we can always make those address, those changes later as well. Thank you for discussion. 8E, I'll just read again, the board consider making termination that good cause nonexist for the individual listed, listed in this agenda item. This item will be discussed in closed session. 8F, the board consider approving the superintendent's recommendation to give notice to the individual listed here, that the employment with the district under terms of contract has been terminated. This item will be discussed in closed session. 8G, the board consider approving the superintendent's recommendation to give a notice to the individual listed here, that her employment with the district is under probationary contract to be determined, to be terminated. This item will be discussed in closed session as well. 8H, the board consider approving the superintendent's recommendation to give a notice to the individual listed here, that her employment with the district under term contract be terminated. This item will be discussed in closed session, all pursuant to section 21.211. Then 8I, the board will consider approving the superintendent's recommendation to give a notice to the individual listed here, that his employment with the district under contract term be terminated and recommended to the board, that individual be terminated pursuant to section 21.211 of the Texas Educator Code, and will be discussed in closed session. Will now proceed with discussion items. Excuse me, that's 9A will be discussed on Monday, and 9B will be discussed on Monday as well. Seeing no more agenda items, I'd like to thank everyone being here tonight. Also like to thank those who are watching from home. May I please get a motion to move into closed session?
So moved.
As unanimous, all can go in closed session. Thank you very much. Have a good night. And we will not return from closed session.